Good evening. This is a planning board meeting of Tuesday, October 22, 2024. We have a few items on the agenda tonight, but we all stand in salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visible with liberty and justice for all.
Take a roll call for attendance. Glenn Feldman.
Here.
Rakesh Allen.
Here.
Ron Brooks.
Here.
Jason Assarifi.
Here.
Myself, John Regas, an eye. Staff assistant, Danielle Chamberlain. I can't remember her whole name, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I'll put you.
Here.
Dr. Adam and I.
Here.
First on the agenda tonight at 7:00 PM is applicant Lee Morse requesting a special permit, site plan approval under section 3.2.5.4 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for an indoor entertainment facility at 366 Southbridge Street, Auburn, Mass., MAP 33, parcel 81. They have requested to withdraw their application without prejudice. May I have a motion to accept their withdrawal?
I'm moved to... Ryan. Moved to accept the withdrawal without prejudice?
Second.
Second.
Favor, Glenn?
Aye.
Rakesh?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Next on the agenda is applicant Sunshine Adult Day Care Health Center LLC requesting a site plan approval under section 3.2.3.1 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for an adult daycare facility at 27 Midstate Drive, Auburn, Mass., MAP 47, parcel 75. May I have a motion to open the hearing?
Moved to open the hearing?
Have a second.
I'll second it.
All those in favor, Glenn?
Aye.
Rakesh?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Anyone here representing the adult daycare? Up there.
All right, well, good evening, everyone. My name is Jody Kett, I'm from the law firm about it in Dewey. I'm here tonight on Sunshine Adult Day Healthcare Center LLC's application for site plan review, as the chair just eloquently stated. I did prepare a very, very short slide deck for you. I can't figure out how to get in presentation mode, so I have printed it out and hopefully you have it all in front of you. So the applicant, or joining me tonight is the architect for the project, Jesse Hildenberg, as well as Liang Zhang, the principal for the applicant. So we're seeking a site plan review tonight in connection with a new licensed adult elder day nursery use. The applicant will be entering into a lease containing approximately 9,550 square feet of space, including office space, a warming kitchen, ADA compliant showers and bathrooms, and other interior improvements. The property is located entirely within the Highway Business Zoning District and the Watershed Protection Overlay District. The project will include transportation services, meal services, activities such as singing, yoga, board games, et cetera, social work. There will be nurses and social work staff that will assist clients in applying for various benefits, including daycare services, housing subsidies, and government assistance. There will also be health monitoring, which will be periodically shared with the client's PCPs or primary care physicians, as I should... Sorry, my wife is a pharmacist, so I use acronyms now, but I realize the PCP is not always widely accepted as primary care physician. But the focus of the proposed use is on daily care, and just general health maintenance. There's not any significant medical care taking place, and the hours of operation are generally from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, so there's no overnight stays at all. Through the Development Coordination Group meeting, we determined that the nursing home use was the most applicable use here, which requires one parking space for every employee on the larger shift, plus a half of parking space for every bed. There will be about upwards of 15 beds/reclining chairs under the regulations for this use, but again, those beds are really just there for ref, they're not intended for overnight stay. But regardless, the project will contain at least 33 parking spaces, as you can kind of see the general parking area in front of you on slide number two. That's where the, most of the parking will occur. There will be about 15 to 20 company vehicles, and those vehicles will be transporting clients to and from the site safely, which will reduce the need for anybody to drive independently to the site, further reducing the impact on the traffic and parking conditions there. There's also the, if you see the three properties just to the south of the 27 Midstate Drive development there, are also all owned by the landlord. It contains over 600 available parking spaces, so to the extent that there are not sufficient spaces in close proximity to the leased premises, we have permission to park there. So if it ever comes into that situation, the clients can be dropped off in close proximity to the entrance of the daycare, and then the employee can park elsewhere and walk to the site. I mean, that's a high-level overview. I'm happy to answer any questions that the board may have. Thank you.
Is there anyone from the audience that has any questions regarding this project? Please come up, state your name and your address, please.
Evening, I'm Robert Duff, I'm the director of about it, 36 Goulding Drive. My question, I didn't catch the beginning, but the hour of the operation for this facility, how many days a week is it gonna be running?
The 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM.
And that's Monday through Friday?
Monday through Friday, yes.
No, at this time, no thoughts of weekends or any of that? What would holidays during the week, would they, would you still be operation?
No major holidays, but maybe some smaller holidays.
You would be operating?
But if it was during the week, yes.
Okay.
Like Columbus Day, Veterans Day, you're not gonna be open Christmas, Thanksgiving, New Year's, Easter?
That, not currently contemplated, no. No.
And then one follow-up question, you indicated 15 to 20 vans being utilized, are they gonna be parked? So they're gonna come, pick up the client, type out patient, drop them off, and then...
Can you please speak into the microphone?
Please, so they can hear you on the video.
Thank you.
I'm just asking about the operation, about the vehicles to pick up, like I said, directly abouting the property. I just wanna make sure that, you know, they're gonna show up in the morning, but you're saying the vans will not be there parked overnight? Yeah, you gotta kind of...
I believe in the package that says that the operators of the vans take them home.
The operators of the vans drive them home at night, and then from their house go pick up their clients, drive them to the facility, and then drive them home, and then go home.
They're during the day, right?
Yeah, they're there during the day, they will be there all day.
Eight to four.
Yeah, eight to four.
It's in their presentation, eight to 4:00 PM, Monday through Friday. We can put the condition on no major holidays. But I mean, like Columbus Day, Royal Day, 4th of July, and Labor Day, there won't be anybody there, correct?
That would be the anticipation for the major holidays, we wouldn't have anything, and there may be holidays, correct me if I'm wrong, Chinese holidays, Chinese New Year, they might not have too, but that's, I can't tell you that exact schedule yet. But that would, that would be my anticipation, the majors off, and then a few of the ones we might not celebrate, but their client base does. Same thing, yeah.
That's it, thank you.
Board have any questions? Go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would have appreciated if we had gotten some, a diagram that we could actually have read. The one you just gave out was a little bit bigger, but I had to bring this with me, and I can still barely read it, so I just thought I'd mention it. The facility's gonna be on the second floor, does that present you any challenges if the power goes out, or...
Maybe Jesse, you can speak to that.
So the building is now split, the bottom floor doesn't interact with the upper floor at all. There's an elevator, which goes from a lobby on the second floor down to someone's tenant space. So we actually met with the fire department and the building department to kind of figure out a way to do that. Right now, they can roll in with an accessible entrance on the second floor, in your diagram from the, the upper part of the building, on your diagram, the blue, the blue part.
Backside?
Yeah, the backside, they wheel right in on the second floor level, so it's like a, I don't know what you call them, the house which, entrance on this side, here, and then the entrance on the first floor on the other side.
Split level of the walk-in.
Thank you. I should know that as an architect, but it's embarrassing. And then there's a second exit that stares off of the left side of the diagram down, so even in the event of a power loss completely, there's no elevator. The vast majority of their clients are more energetic than I am, to be honest with you. There's, we did one of these in Worcester, and it's crazy, it's basically like children. It's the closest thing to think about.
Yes, I did. How can you be sure your drivers are out there on the road if they're taking the van home? How do you know they're out there making their pickups?
That's a great question, I can't answer, actually. I can, let me ask, let me ask Liang and see if I can answer.
I used to be in a similar business to that, I worked for the Guild of St. Agnes as a transportation director, and we had all the drivers come in and check in and punch in first, and then go make their pickups.
All right, let me ask, if you don't mind, give me a minute or two.
Right, right, right.
It's a good question.
It's a very good question, caught client off guard. The response is, they trust them. And then if we needed a GPS, and that's why I asked, do we have GPS, or do we trust them? Right now, it's the trust. And then if it has to go to GPS, we would monitor them that way.
Thank you.
Yeah, just a couple of questions, thank you for the presentation. So, one, I think from the report, the space today is not occupied, right?
Yeah, the whole second floor of that building, it's, let's call it two tenant areas, we're taking one, but the whole second, second story of that is empty.
And so, the parking spots on the site today, so of those, you'll carve out 33 spaces, right? Would you, would those be marked out separately?
I don't think they would. No, so the landlord expressed that he didn't really wanna be responsible for policing the parking, so none of the tenants on any of the entire industrial complex have exclusive parking, but they all have the right to park within the entirety of the complex, and there's over 600 spaces, so. Okay.
Currently, the whole building except for the lower level, when you first come in off the main driveway, is unoccupied.
That is our understanding, yes.
You said you can use all the additional spaces that you want, but that's while none of the other areas are occupied.
I would imagine it's first come, first served, yeah.
If he rents the bottom level on that west end, or the other upper level that you're not taking, then those spots would be full.
They, they could be full if they're fully tenanted out, it's, I mean...
If they're rented out, but down on the lower level, up around, and you're gonna turn around, make the U to come up the top side. There was also, I think I saw parking spaces on the opposite side of the building, you know, that looked like there was. Currently, do you know, now the building is vacant, but when the building was occupied, maybe the prior speaker knows, but when the building was occupied, were they there day and night, or just eight to five? I mean, because at some points, that building has been occupied up in the back and the top, and a lot more fully than it is now.
Sure. I, I do know that there are existing tenants that are there right now. As for their hours of operation, I'm, I'm not entirely sure.
So, yeah, the bottom floor, last time I was there, was fully occupied, and it's all business use offices. The upstairs was all businesses, and they operated sometimes two shifts, because they did some calls and stuff like that, but they weren't there 24/7. It was probably a nine to five, I don't know for sure, but it was probably a nine to five type, type business. The whole second story was all that.
But it seems like they would have been there probably to some degree more than eight to four.
Yeah, probably, I would, I would guess.
All set, John? All set.
What's your construction timeline? Pending approvals and all that.
So pending approvals, if we got approvals tonight, we'd be applying for a building permit November 1-ish, engineering's finishing up, and then I would assume 60 days to review, and then it'd be a three month, the contractor says six weeks, I struggle with that one, I think it's an eight week anyway, and then it would be another month probably for licensure. Yeah, it would probably be, by the time we are open, open, it would probably be March or April is what I would expect. They would, yeah, they would have to use the 33 spaces, we'd probably, I know we can't mark them out, but we'd probably, it's builder systems, is the contractor, so they're doing the Webster Five Bank, too, so they're familiar with working at Auburn, we'd probably, I know we can't tape off, but I would encourage them to tape off something for a dumpster. There's relatively minor demo, so most of the waste is gonna be produced in construction itself. That would be what I would encourage them, and then the, yeah, the workers would park on site, and they won't use more than 33 spaces, probably use six or seven.
One question, maybe I think for, for Adam, would, would the applicant need a board of health review, given that there is...
Not that I'm aware of, I can check with them, but not aware of anything specific.
Yeah, we should look at that.
All right. So, for the warming kitchen, we do need to go for a plan review application with the board of health.
Well, one question, you say warming kitchen, I looked on the plant, I didn't see a stove, I saw a lot of microwaves, but I didn't see a stove.
There's three, yeah, three convection ovens, so the plan is now you order from a Chinese restaurant, they actually bring it in for you, you put them in the convection ovens, you serve, and then you take, you clean, there's a three-bay sink, and then they take everything with them at the end of the day, so there's nothing left over. So three convection ovens for heat, I think two microwaves. Yeah, there's a, underneath the three-bay sink, we're putting in a grease trap. I assume the DPW and the plumbing inspector would ask for, they almost always do. Yeah.
Quite a good point about dumpsters and stuff, I mean, I was just over there yesterday to go to EZ Pass, and the parking lot in the front was fairly busy. I didn't drive around back, but if that's empty, that's one thing, but if it's not, it's as busy as the front, I don't know if you're gonna get all the parking spaces you want.
I've never seen a car in the back half of that building parked. I saw one truck, let me remind that, it was one truck, and it was, he was cleaning the space, so, not to say there won't be, but that's my experience, there's never been an issue, on the backside, and then the lower, because it kind of comes up and then around.
Right way out the back. What about signage coming in, because you go into Midstate, every building has their sign, what's there, try to find the one that says EZ Pass, it doesn't exist.
That one, have it, have it on the, right outside the office.
They used to have it, but they don't anymore.
That's it.
Don't wanna say the wrong thing, I don't know if it's in the lease agreement or not for her sign, it's on the building or not, there will be one on the front door, but I don't remember the other one.
The front door being the back of the building?
Yes, the back door.
There's a, there's no otherwise anticipated signage, other than, if, to the extent there's a pylon sign on the property, maybe something there, like just noting the business, but it's not currently contemplated. We'd be open to something saying, any signage be in conformance of the zoning bylaw.
Should be a sign directing people to the rear of the building for your facility. I mean, you're gonna, it's not just your workers are gonna be there, there's gonna be other people coming in, I mean, you get a new driver delivering the meals, he's gonna be wandering around four parking lots trying to find you. I mean, I was just over to my insurance company, telling them to park out, they just moved into the building, you can't even see the sign, because it's a, it's a darkened window, and the sign's on the inside. I actually had to go up to the door and look, see.
There was, John, I believe there was a couple, right when you're coming straight down Midstate, right before you make the left, the start to go up in Fast Lane would be on your right, I thought I saw some, something in the ground there, a pole or something where you might be able to put some type of a sign, and maybe this gentleman's gonna shed some...
Permission, being living there for 30 years, yes, as you come in, there's this, the dumpster set up, as you pull up, Midstate Drive in on the right, and then there is a, there is a sign, a post in which has the MEP, which is the Massachusetts Environmental, something, they're up on the upper level, so there is a spot there for signage. I agree with you, there's nothing for EZ Pass, they usually park in front of my house trying to find out where the place is, so, that's kind of a quick, there is, you know, typically, my, being through the project, each building has, like in front, a sign with a number and stuff, and tenants, it's not very visible, but that's, I assume they're probably not gonna venture far from that, that setup, so, thank you.
Anybody from the audience? Do you have any more to present? Are you guys all set?
That's all we have.
I think it's a great addition to the town. Personally, I wouldn't call it a nursing, a nursing school, whatever you call it, I'd just call it an adult daycare center.
Yeah, the, the use is an adult day nursery, but the parking schedule is a nursing home, yeah.
Being an old gentleman myself, if I had to go there, I think I'd be offended if the place was called nursery, in my personal opinion. Adult daycare center, that's great, but nursery, that's gonna put people's minds, they're bringing the babies, they're bringing the little kids, you know what I mean? That's what a nursery definition is, I believe.
I agree.
They have a motion to approve as submitted?
Close the hearing.
I'm sorry, they have a motion to close the hearing?
I'll make the motion to call the, close the public hearing?
They have a second?
I'll second it.
Those in favor, Glenn?
Aye.
Rakesh?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Myself, John Regas, an eye. The hearing's now closed. May I have a motion to approve as submitted with the following conditions that they meet, plumbing code, building code, all the permits.
I'll make that motion to approve.
They have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor, Glenn?
Aye.
Rakesh?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
I hate his vote, good luck.
Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda tonight is applicant CEMS LLC Care Henry Reisenkopf requesting a special permit in site plan approval under section 3.2.5.3 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for a coffee shop and other site improvements at 602 Southbridge Street, Auburn, Mass., 01501, MAP 56, parcel 148. This applicant has requested to continue to our next meeting?
November 12.
They've requested to continue to our November 12 meeting. May I have a motion to continue?
I'll make that motion.
They have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, Glenn?
Aye.
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 Myself, John Regas, an eye. Other business decisions, 368 Southbridge Street, 7 Dunker Street, 46 October Street, all have been signed, and I didn't get...
Just the 16th.
Yeah, just the 16th. Could I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes as submitted for a September 16, 2024 meeting?
I'll make that motion.
They have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, Glenn?
Aye.
Rakesh?
Aye.
Ron?
Jason?
Aye.
Myself, John Regas, an eye. New business unforeseen by the chair, I'd like to skip ahead to see if there's any new business or town plan or update. So, what I'd like to bring up is during the zoning board of appeals last Thursday, they approved the Vinyl Street, 21 Building, 42 Unit Development at the end of Vinyl Street, right down by the old Julia Bancroft School behind that, and I think we can appeal that. I would like to find a way to, I don't know how to go about negotiating with them to reduce the number of homes, there seemed to be some confusion in that meeting. It seemed to me that everybody thought the right-of-way was the paved surface, the right-of-way is not the paved surface, that's just the right-of-way. So if they have, even though it's private, if they have a right-of-way in that development, and that right-of-way, they put the utilities in the sewer, the water, electric, telephone, cable, all goes underground in that right-of-way, and that's always, the utility companies always have access to that for repair. But the way they have it set up now, we'd like to see a sidewalk going, at least I like to see a sidewalk going all around a development, at least one side, and the answer we got was, during our planning board meeting, was, well, they'll have to walk around the back of a car. No, that's unacceptable, to me, that's unacceptable.
John, someone, they also spoke about, I said I wanted the road built up, brought up to highway department standards, I think you said the same, I think we should leave it, have that, and then someone brought up that there was supposed to be a sidewalk, and they said, well, we don't have enough room. Well, my comment is, if you don't, maybe you can't build the project. Are we supposed to just allow anything? They don't have adequate room to put a road like they're supposed to and a sidewalk, which is minimal, it's in a neighborhood with other kids and other people and apartments. You can't do it, you can't build the project.
Well, the other thing they mentioned is they bring in a sidewalk in from pretty much where the property line or the parking lot ends for the old Julia Bancroft School, down to where the, their development meets where they're gonna extend Vinyl Street, and then it's gonna end, and it's, to me, when someone tells me, yeah, we can put a sidewalk, you have to walk around the back of a car, that's not my problem, that's a you problem. For safety, there's gonna be kids down there, you need a sidewalk.
Vinyl comes down and goes to Nancy.
If she's on the right, vinyl keep trying to go.
Just, I think, maybe to where the gate is for their thing, or it ends someplace in there, I'm not sure, I'm not sure where it ends.
To the, to the chair, just to be clear, the zoning board of appeals approved the use, they didn't approve the layout, they just approved the use, they're allowing the use, it's up to this board.
The zoning board.
Right, they didn't approve how it's laid out, they didn't approve the width of the roadway, that's this board's purview. So they just approved the use, if you, if you...
So when they come before us, John had prepared a list of them that he read off before the meeting ended last week, and then there was still some other questions that others answered that.
Right, and it's also off of peer review, and I'm still waiting on a traffic study, which will also be peer reviewed. So the project that was voted on as ZBA was simply to allow that the excess, the townhouse, the duplexes to be built, it's not approving the layout, roadway, the utilities, any of that. Sorry?
Number of units?
Number of units is, that's...
That's us.
That, that's debatable, I can talk to town council, and also, if you want to appeal, the only way to appeal, after you ask me this, I thought about it for a moment, appealing a ZBA decision goes through land court or superior court, so if this board wants to sue ZBA, that's something that we'll have to discuss with the town manager and the town council.
If it's just an approval for the use of the lot, I don't have a problem with it.
That's what the ZBA gave, he said, John, right?
Correct, they can, they can put housing units down there. I guess how many they can put in is up to us.
They would have to, we shouldn't be talking about this too, too much deliberating like this with, without it being specified, but yes, the layout is strictly this board's purview, the driveway, the width, the sidewalks, that's all this board's purview, the stormwater, all that, like any other site plan.
And the road and everything else.
Well, I don't always keep calling it a road, it's not really a road, but that, it's a driveway, the proposal is to have that a housing condo association, that driveway is not a road, it's not a right-of-way, it's strictly to access the parcel, so just, just bear that in mind with, in the future.
I, I agree with what you said, but my concern is, we had people come in from Prospect Street, none of the same guys, that their road's gonna be taken care of, it's falling apart, and they wanted the town to take it over, and we said, no, you have to get your own engineer, see what it's gonna cost you to do it, I never heard another word. Never heard another word, because it's really expensive.
Right.
And I think explicitly, when they came, John, to us originally, they spoke, they up at the corner, on the right-hand corner of Prospect, that they have it like that, a private road and everything like that, and they flipped right around...
Which is fine. I mean, like Pine Ledge and the other condo development up on Packet Drive Hill, that's